Twenty-five. It is six forty, and we're going to go ahead and get the meeting going. All board members are present with the exception of Ms. Flores, Mrs. Flores, who has a prior engagement with her profession that she cannot be here tonight. And a report of action taken during on closed session. There was no closed session items to report. And that'll take us to the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. It is my pleasure to welcome the proud principal of Royal Oak Middle School, Dr. Jen Powell, to introduce the reciter of our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Peterson, esteemed members of the Board of Education, Dr. Kim, and Executive Cabinet. Tonight, it is truly my privilege to introduce a student who embodies the very best of Royal Oak runner spirit, Kenneth Spencer. Kenny, will you come up and lead us in the flag salute tonight?
Please stand up. Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kenny is an exceptional student, consistently earning top marks all around in his classes. Beyond academics, he stands out as a dedicated, well-rounded leader. He currently serves as our ASB president, runs our, runs on our cross-country team, and is a standout member of both this advanced band and even marches with the high school marching band. As impressive as his school commitments are, his dedication to the community is equally remarkable. Kenny is actively working on his Eagle Scout project, which involves revamping the wrestling room at the high school to create a vital space to support future wrestlers, a cause close to his heart. In his spare time, if he has any, he races motocross on his bicycle and runs his own YouTube channel, providing math tutorials for others. We are incredibly proud to have a student of Kenny's caliber representing the Royal Oak Roadrunners tonight. Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Kenny, hold on, sweetheart.
And I believe Dr. Powell is going to be introducing her superstar student and then following with that, her partner in education. Please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Kim. I am thrilled to introduce Royal Oak Middle School's star student, Stella Ortega. Stella truly represents the best of what we hope for in our Royal Oak runners. She is an exceptional student who maintains a stellar 4.0 GPA. Beyond her academic success, she is deeply involved in the school and community life. In drama, she's a standout performer, taking on key roles, including the part of Maisie La Bird in this year's production of Seussical. I cannot wait until February, just a little plug for our musical, to see this fantastic production come alive, where I know she will shine. She is a dedicated leader in ASB. She served as seventh grade president and is currently the manager of activities. She was a critical contributor to our recent, very successful rally. Outside of school, she's a highly disciplined athlete, participating in competitive swim, and is an active member of Girl Scouts. Most importantly, and this part I love, when I asked her, what do you see for yourself? What do you want to do in the future? She shared, I'm not sure, but whatever it is, I want to make a positive impact on the world. And that part, just absolutely what I see from her day in and day out. She, I can confirm, she's off to an outstanding start. Please join me in recognizing Stella Ortega, a dedicated scholar, leader, and community contributor. Next, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Judy Ladon, my amazing assistant principal, who works really closely with our community partner. So I'm going to have her introduce our community partner, though I could not be more proud of her myself, but, you know.
Can I please have Miriam Delgado come join me? Thank you. So tonight, we have the distinct honor of truly celebrating our extraordinary member of our Royal Oak community, our dedicated counseling intern, who we happen to coerce over to our side. We stole her from a job on our site, and we love her. So thank you for being our valued community partner, Miriam Delgado. Miriam embodies an unwavering commitment to student well-being and engagement. She consistently goes above and beyond in her role. Her greatest impact is perhaps seen in the strong and genuine relationships that she builds with our students. Through her structured check-ins and students assigned to her caseload, we have seen how they have grown in that time with her, both in their academics, in their citizenship, and even in their just overall wanting to be at school. Okay? We see that in their citizenship and attendance. Beyond her individual counseling mentorship, Miriam is also a catalyst for a positive school culture. She is the driving force behind our rallies, our lunchtime activities, and utilizes both team-building and getting-to-know-you activities that help our entire school level up its positive culture. She even brings staff members into the activities, ensuring the community as a whole feels connected. What truly set Miriam apart is her incredible dedication and generosity of time. We know that she donates countless unpaid hours to be present for our students, often showing up as early as 7:00 AM to support our student success talks on the days that she's not even assigned to our site and our rallies. Her dedication is a powerful example of the commitment we cherish at Royal Oak. Miriam, thank you for your exceptional service, passion, and partnership. Please, please join me in honoring Miriam.
But prior to that, we'd like to invite Iris Cuevas up, who is our Charter Oak High School student rep, to the studio of Glendora for our introduction. Go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself, if you don't mind, ma'am.
Yeah, of course. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a wonderful day today. I'm Iris. I'm a senior at Charter Oak High School. A little bit about me is that I've been involved in ASB for all four years of high school, taking leadership positions for three. I've been, you know, sophomore class vice president, junior class vice president, and I currently hold the role of senior class president and senior council president. And I spend most of my time, you know, in ASB, planning events, working on things, staying after school, any free time that I can, is dedicated to ASB, hoping to make so many amazing events for the students there. And if it's not in ASB, it's, you know, on the court, playing with my volleyball team, you know, late practices at night. You know, we just played our last game of the season yesterday, placing second in the league, and on our way to CIF soon. And that's a little bit about me.
I can attest, she's very mean on the volleyball court, too. She's a phenomenal player. Thank you. Good luck with your, your council meetings. Okay, Heather, welcome. You're up. And can you also give the ROMs highlights also? Yeah, thank you.
All right. Royal Oak Middle School has fully embraced its school-wide "level up" theme this year with a strong focus on enhancing school culture and student engagement. They are pleased to report that our initial intentional efforts are already yielding measurable results. Compared to the same period last year, our school-wide attendance has increased from 95.5% to 96.04%. This positive trend is a direct reflection of new strategies, including weekly and monthly attendance incentives, as well as intentional engagement activities designed to foster a cohesive community. A primary example of this cultural shift was our first school-wide rally, a high, a highly successful event designed to build excitement and cross-grade collaboration. The rally featured a spirited competition between seventh grade and eighth grade students and teachers across a variety of fun games and chants. This was a genuine community effort. The Associated Student Body led direction and activity support. The broadcast journalism class managed the music, and the school band provided live energy. It was a unifying and spirited way to launch the school year. Our next event, a superheroes-themed rally, is scheduled for November 14th. We eagerly anticipate continuing this momentum and seeing the positive impact on our Roadrunner community throughout the remainder of the year. In addition to Royal Oak's success in boosting student engagement, the entire Royal Oak staff has committed to leveling up academics. This effort is a twofold, a recommitment to instructional excellence and the establishment of a targeted student support system. For instructional re-collaboration, our staff is undergoing a focused recalibration, sorry, to ensure the consistent application of Tier One instructional best practices across the school. This effort emphasizes avid instructional practices and reinforces a school-wide focus on literary across all content areas, building essential reading, writing, and critical thinking skills for every student. In addition, great efforts are being made to ensure a formalized, data-driven process for targeting student support. Following each I-ready screening period, students demonstrating academic challenges are given additional diagnostic assessments. This leads to the formation of a collaborative study, which means to identify precise necessary supports such as dedication intervention, focused study skills, or weekly check-ins, check-ins with counselors. By basing support decisions on concrete data, the interventions are more targeted to individual student needs, ensuring gaps are quickly addressed. These focused strategies have already yielded significant results. At the close of the first grading period, we observed a dramatic decrease in the number of students placed on the academic at-risk list. For eighth graders, the percentage of students identified as at-risk decreased from 12.5% last year to 7.8% this year, representing a nearly 5% point reduction. And for seventh graders, the grade level also demonstrated strong improvement, achieving a nearly 2% reduction in the number of the students on the at-risk list. The Royal Oak staff is extremely motivated by these early indicators of student success and looks forward to continuing to drive academic growth throughout the year. And as for Charter Oak, I will get to that right now. All right. The choir department kicked off the start of their year with a successful first concert, where they showcased many pieces, such as some from the Night Before Christmas movie, engaging both students and viewers. The first grading period closed on September 26th, with parent conferences falling on October 6th during the day, which allowed students and parents to communicate with teachers. The annual Oak Tree Challenge event began with a rainy start, but ultimately ended with a great turnout, continuing to engage the community and supporting one another. Our Charter Oak football team is on a roll, and the varsity football team has won three games back-to-back, with each resulting in a shutout. Our most recent home football game was the homecoming game, where we announced senior Kayla Lambert as the homecoming queen, and resulted in a 42-0 win. Along with football, other sports such as cross-country, tennis, water polo are closing their seasons and preparing to work their way to league finals in CIF. Volleyball also closed their senior night out with a successful win against Roland, and the drama department is working diligently to perform for their November shows, where they will be performing Holiday Inn. And as for another academic point, many colleges have come to visit our campus, where Ms. Vazquez has been in contact with colleges such as APU, USC, GCU, and Cal Baptist, in order to communicate with students about their programs and more. And the event even included a University of Laverne on the site admissions process.
Thank you, ma'am. Now is a good time for those in the audience who were recognized. If you want to go ahead and get out, you're more than welcome to. Item 10, ROP report, Mr. Rose. Oh, what? Oh, we'll wait till you leave, though, if you want to. All right, Mr. Rose, ROP report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report at this time because our next meeting is next Thursday. So the next board meeting, well, I'll leave you right now. I have the next meeting next week.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'll take us to item 11, superintendent report. Dr. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Good evening. Happy Thursday, everyone. Happy Bosses' Day to our board, the four, five best bosses that I know of. So just want to share that with you guys. Really just, really incredible things that are happening at work and in progress in our school district. We've talked a great deal about collaboration in our school district, and we know collaboration is a key driver to improving student outcomes. And so just really thankful and grateful for the work that has occurred under the leadership of Dr. Mustafa and the Educational Services Team. We've had every single elementary grade team, teacher, come together, work together, collaborate around really important, critical topics in our school district. We've begun this work with our secondary collaborative teams as well, and this work will continue on through the course of the school year. So again, proud of all the incredible work that's happening amongst our professional work groups. I've shared with this board in, in the last couple of months around just the ongoing work of addressing our, our fiscal challenges ahead. And so as a reminder to this board, we have some challenges due to declining enrollment, inflation, rising costs. We have threats to our funding that are happening nationally, and that's being impacted potentially here. And so as we see these impacts across districts in California, it's not immune to us. We're not immune to that as well here in Charter Oak Unified. And so we need to address nearly $3 million in reductions in the next two years. And so we have some work ahead, and I'm super just proud of the work that we've begun. And we've had Dr. Mustafa and Mr. Joyce Sarkula facilitate a district-wide budget advisory committee. And they've convened together last week, and they, they have some ensuing meetings ahead. And the purpose of this group is to make sure that they have shared learning and that they're providing feedback and input on understanding what our district values might be and what those priorities are going to be, so that we can be well-informed in how we might be able to address those budget reductions. So more news ahead. We'll share that progress as we hear more from that team. A couple more items. Our East San Gilbert Valley SELPA, Special Education Local Plan Area, is hosting their annual arts festival on Monday, October 27th, right here at Royal Oak Middle School. And Royal Oak's going to have scores of school buses that are transporting kids that participate, students with disabilities across our SELPA onto one campus, and a great opportunity for them to showcase their artwork, their accomplishments, and also to have some immersive experiences for them to grow as young educators or young students as well. Lastly, we heard great news. Rebecca Portnoy, under her direction, the Charter Oak Choir, has been invited to perform at Carnegie Hall in New York City in, in the spring of 2026. So super excited about that. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. And that'll take us to presentations. Dr. Kim.
Okay, I'm going to invite Dr. Mustafa to the podium to present on our annual math placement policy. This is a requirement by law, and I will turn it over to her to present why we're doing this, along with the ensuing data.
Thank you, Dr. Kim, Board President Peterson, Vice President Dr. Aguilar, Board of Trustees, Executive Cabinet, and community members. I'm going to present our ninth grade math placement, our policy. Back in 2015, the California Mathematics Placement Act was established, and it was established to really provide clear expectations and data-driven student placement for ninth grade students. This eliminates any subjective feedback from, from teachers, but really is an objective and academic measures of placing students in ninth grade math. So per our board policy, we do an annual analysis of our ninth grade students and where they are placed. We talk about the criteria of how students are placed, and then our students have an option or an opportunity to be reevaluated outside of the criteria if they feel that they've been misplaced. So at the, when our students enter in from ninth, ninth grade, their placement is based off of the end-of-course grade in eighth grade coming into their freshman year, as well as their I-ready diagnostic, and sometimes we'll use our CASP scores as well. Again, they also have an opportunity to be reevaluated. So our current students for the year, this year, our ninth grade students, we have a total of 307 freshmen, and of the 307 freshmen, 197 of those students are in Math I, which makes up 67% of our freshman population. Eighty-six of our freshmen are in Math II, which is comprised of 28%. Eleven students are in Math I-A. Nine are in Intro Math I, and four of them are in Functional Math, which is a lot severe. And that concludes our presentation.
Questions? Ma'am?
Hi, can you explain the difference between Math I-A and Intro to Math I?
So Math I-A is like standard or old-school, like algebra, and Intro is a bit like the eighth grade math.
Is Math I-A A through G?
It is.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I'm trying to understand the, I'll call it, is she, the student to move into Math I, when Math II? I'm trying to understand, are we looking at the number of student enrollment in each department and then work, work their way up to Math I and II? Or is it just to get them up to the level where they already prepare to take math at a high school level?
So all of our freshmen coming in are placed into a math class. This is to evaluate and analyze where they're placed. So most of our students incoming freshmen are placed in Math I based on their academic level. Math II is the higher math for our freshman class.
Got you. Thank you.
Any further questions? No? Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to public comments. First up, Lacy Buntain.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lacy Buntain. My brother and sister are students of Charter Oak Unified School District, where they weren't given the proper placement or services necessary for them to succeed in their education, which in turn caused years of constant worry and stress for everyone in my family. It took the help of an attorney to get them what they needed, and it not only improved their abilities at school, but have helped them thrive outside of school as well, which we should all agree is what every child is owed when they attend any school. Please do better for all children, so kids now and in the future can leave school very capable to take on the world and succeed in it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Buntain?
I'm here to reiterate the issues we've had personally with the Special Education Department, in particular, the, the head of the program. We really need things to change so our kids and all kids with special needs and IEPs get the services they need and deserve. It has affected my family tremendously, and it's time for change. Please help our children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Darlene Maddox?
My name's Darlene Maddox. I live within Charter Oak Unified School District. My son Dominic attends Royal Oak. He's in the eighth grade. He is qualified for special education and has an IEP. He has all specialized academic instruction classes. Ever since Dominic entered junior high, he has had nothing but problems. He's not getting an appropriate education at the junior high. He's in the eighth grade, and he is understanding nothing. He has an IEP but is not being taught at an individual level. I share the Buntains' concerns about how special education is working in our district because it is not.
Teresa Buntain?
Hello. My name is Teresa Buntain. I will continue to come to every board meeting until my issues are resolved. The leadership in the special education is very flawed and does not allow for all kids to thrive. I, like any parent, want my child to be capable of taking on the world after high school, which is what every child who attends school is owed. I'm, I'm here to advocate for all families, so no one has to go through what we did. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Forteau?
I'm here to irriate, irritate what I was speaking about on the last meeting, 9/18/25. Thank you, Dr. Bond, for your quick response to my request for information at the last governing board meeting. Your email states the district's duty to maintain confidential confidentiality in personnel file. I understand that. It is also the duty of any person, agency administrators, most importantly, each public-elected governing board member, to ensure that all employees are held accountable when tax dollars are wrongly paid, and those employees, and that the money wrongly paid is recovered and returned to the taxpayer. Although the district has stated-
Math 2 is the higher math for our freshman class.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further questions? No? Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to public comments. First up, Lacey Buntain.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lacey Buntain. My brother and sister are students of Charter Oak Unified School District where they weren't given the proper placement or services necessary for them to succeed in their education, which in turn caused years of constant worry and stress for everyone in my family. It took the help of an attorney to get them what they needed and it not only improved their abilities at school, but have helped them thrive outside of school as well, which we should all agree is what every child is owed when they attend any school. Please do better for all children so kids now and in the future can leave school very capable to take on the world and succeed in it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Buntain?
I'm here to reiterate the issues we've had personally with the Special Education Department and in particular the head of the program. We really need things to change so our kids and all kids with special needs and IEPs get the services they need and deserve. It has affected my family tremendously and it's time for change. Please help our children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Darlene Maddox?
My name's Darlene Maddox. I live within Charter Oak Unified School District. My son Dominic attends Royal Oak. He's in the eighth grade. He is qualified for special education and has an IEP. He has all specialized academic instruction classes. Ever since Dominic entered junior high, he has had nothing but problems. He's not getting an appropriate education at the junior high. He's in the eighth grade and he is understanding nothing. He has an IEP but is not being taught at an individual level. I share the Buntains' concerns about how special education is working in our district because it is not.
Teresa Buntain?
Hello, my name is Teresa Buntain. I will continue to come to every board meeting until my issues are resolved. The leadership in the special education is very flawed and does not allow for all kids to thrive. I, like any parent, want my child to be capable of taking on the world after high school, which is what every child who attends school is owed. I'm here to advocate for all families so no one has to go through what we did. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Forteau?
Thank you for the word. I'm here to irriate what I was speaking about on the last meeting, 9/18/25. Thank you, Dr. Bond, for your quick response to my request for information at the last governing board meeting. Your email states the district's duty to maintain confidential confidentiality in personnel file. I understand that. It is also the duty of any person, agency administrators, most importantly, each public-elected governing board member, to ensure that all employees are held accountable when tax dollars are wrongly paid and those employees, and that the money wrongly paid is recovered and returned to the taxpayer. Although the district has stated, "The district considers this matter closed," I do not consider this matter closed. I will continue. So let me restate. Got a minute. "The act of employees abandoning assigned workplace and falsifying payroll are felony counts and conspiracy to commit grand theft and felony counts of grand theft under the California Penal Code 1A2A1 and Penal Code 487A." The act of abandoning contractual workplace assigned involved planning sophistication and professionalism and caused significant financial damage. This was a brazen act of criminality committed by certificated employees of the Charter Oak Unified School District, an agency that depends on public trust, funding, stealing from venerated public school systems, steals from the taxpayers, and the hundreds of students that were entitled to and denied full instructional minutes. It is the responsibility of a governing board member and administrators to ensure that those who steal from public institutions are held completely accountable. Accountability is time. It does not matter if it was 20 years ago. The definition of fraud is that the purpose of fraud is to be secretive. So when it's found out and you learn about it, you need to take appropriate action. This will not stop. Thank you.
All right, item 14 informational. Dr. Kim?
Yeah, we present this information to the board every year and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Branford, our CBO, to present on our annual accounting of developer fees. Ms. Branford?
Thank you, Dr. Kim. Good evening, Board of Trustees. So this informational item is a requirement pursuant to Government Code Section 66006, where the district is required to report the annual accounting of developer fees in Fund 25 for the '24-'25 fiscal year. So what we're looking at is a summary overview of the activities in the developer fee fund. We started out with a beginning fund balance of 2.3 million and we received developer fees revenues of $96,000, interest earned of $93,000, fair value of investments of $27,000, and we also had a small amount of expenditures of $6,565. And we closed the fiscal year at June 30, '25 with $2.5 million in reserves. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer those.
These are restricted funds, correct?
Correct.
And what is the restriction?
So the developer fee fund is for, the use of those funds is really for growth in student enrollment. And so the fund has been around for a very long time and what it does is to help the district with classroom needs or technology, infrastructure, furniture, when we bring in additional students from, especially from development in the boundaries. And so it's been restricted for those purposes. Since the declining enrollment, we don't, you don't see much use of these funds across districts. However, with the TK trans, we were able to or can use some of those funds to accommodate the additional TK students.
Any other questions? Mr. Rose?
Thank you. I know this expenditure of $6,505, what is that? Do you know where we spent on?
I believe that is for the recent developer fee study that we just conducted and paid the consultants. So, and there are times when we'll also have reimbursements back to developers who've changed their minds on following through with their projects. But this year, we actually did a developer fee study that we just recently increased the fees and so we paid the consultant out of the fund.
So when a developer develops a project, in the planning stage, say they want 60 houses, we give them, hey, this is how much it's going to be, they pay the city whatever it is?
Right, so they start with the city and depends on the square footage and.
And then if it goes down to 40 houses, it gets reduced, so therefore the funding would have to be reimbursed?
Correct, so we'd reimburse, or if they totally changed their mind about doing the projects, then yes, we're obligated to reimburse them, back those fees.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any further? No? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next item is a discussion on board policy revision, first reading of Board Bylaw 6158 of Independence Study. Can I get, any discussion on that? Mr. Rose?
Thank you. I have a question about a pack that was added to the board policy. Okay, it says that when students placed on a short-term independence study, admitting single day, work provided will be assigned to be completed on the following Saturday as a Saturday school assignment for intended recruitment. My question is, how do you, what the definition of short-term independence study? When you mean by short-term?
I'll turn it over to Dr. Mustafa to give some explanation to our revisions on our independent study.
Short-term can be, short-term independent study can be one-day absence, whereas previously it was three days or more.
Okay, I get that. It's placed on a short-term independent study. It's placed, I thought you could determine a student need only two weeks studies and then return to regular life. That's what I thought. The short-term, maybe.
So legislation has changed. Where previously, yes, short-term was when they were off-site for multiple days. Now it is one day is considered short, can be short-term independent study. So this helps us recoup ADA for those absences.
I understand. Single day, got you.
Just to follow up on that, and for that one day, the student has to show that they did work.
50%, correct. That is accurate.
I mean, the short day, I mean, short-term independent, one day, it doesn't make sense to alter the other, but it's what it is, right?
Yeah, I think it's the, it's the state trying to help us out a little bit in the recovery of the ADA to help and also to hold the kids accountable to have them do work when they're absent.
Post-COVID absences has been heightened. It's a statewide issue and so this is the way that the state is helping districts when a student is absent one day.
That's all.
All right, that'll take us to action items. 16A, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. That, actually, it's A1, K-12 Data Sharing and Services Partnership Agreement with the Foundation for California Community Colleges. Is there any, can I get a second? Any discussion? Mr. Rose?
I have a couple of questions. I'm concerned about the data sharing. That's one of them. And I have, and fees and payments and services. The two questions I'm going to ask each. One, back to data sharing. All right, is this for, is this for senior only, when they join the organization?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect, okay. Now, it says here, under the contract, the LEA, which is Charter Oak, agreed to provide centralized upload of education records from a local student information system, which is SIS, into the California College websites. My question is, is it secure that they know what they're doing? The California's college websites?
Correct. We verified that.
Yep. Then, I didn't see anything else here. If the student graduated, what happened to the record?
If I may just talk big picture about this initiative, this is actually going to become a state requirement, I believe starting January 1st, 2026, where all school districts in California will need to have a shared agreement with the CaliforniaColleges.edu software program. And essentially what this data sharing, which is going to be secured, under-secured, obviously, if it's coming from the state, there's going to be some protocols, strict protocols, in that data sharing process that will happen through our already approved or responsive CalPads process. And what the data that's being shared is going to be through students, their academic performance, along with their career and college interests, and designing matches between what students are aiming for post-secondary-wise. With the goal, and if you've read some recent news around Governor Newsom, they've enacted a guaranteed admissions program to the CSUs and the means by which they're able to capture whether kids are qualified will be through the CaliforniaColleges.edu program. So it is super exciting. We are getting a step ahead behind this and our next work is to see how might we be able to have some even earlier conversations with the CSU to get some of our kids guaranteed admissions.
I understand this. I do. My question is, education, I'm sorry, my question is, what the name of the company, organization? College? I'm sorry, what the, college guy, I'm sorry. Okay, my question is, California Community College, a foundation for California Community College is a 501 nonprofit organization. How did that be related to education when dealing with data sharing? I mean, it had nothing to do with, even though the title was Foundation of California Community Colleges, I was wondering, who's handling the data sharing? Because if that is a nonprofit organization, it's not an educational institution. It's a nonprofit organization, anybody can work for them, right? And be secretary to handle data. I'm just trying to maintain student confidentiality, is what I'm looking at. So I wanted to make it clear whether the data sharing can protect student information.
Absolutely. I mean, that's part of the agreements that we have in place is to ensure that, you know, security is of high priority. We do have existing systems that we have that do, we do share student information. Example, our student information system is a data sharing site where we have information about our students that is captured through our Ares portal. It is protected. It is something that we work through in our agreements to make sure that they follow all protocols. And that's, essentially, that's, it's guaranteed in terms of, it's a guarantor in terms of what's reflected in the contract.
Yeah, I'm glad I asked that question because we're dealing with Educational Privacy Act, whatever that is. And now, now with the data sharing to be shared with a nonprofit organization, that's my concern. That is my concern. I have a question. Is that automatic, I mean, all seniors, all the seniors will automatically be under the foundation? Whether they like it or not, I'm just asking.
Yes.
So the students don't have a choice, right?
No, it's our obligation to share the data per the state request.
Well, I'm talking about the student that wants to go to college or not. If a student qualifies, I'm not going to know the way. Are all the seniors qualified for the foundation?
It's to have every student have equitable access for post-secondary education.
Like CSU and UC? With data sharing, I'm still at it. I'm going to make it clear, protecting students' rights, privacy. Once the foundation received the data of the SIS, it did, in the student world, let's say the student worked with the people under the foundation and then they got into UCLA, then what happened? Their name drop off on the list from the foundation?
I'm not certain about, so the data, what it does is, the program itself is something that kids or students will enter their career interests, they have career aptitudes, they have college interests, they'll input data that they, they volunteer input around what their interests might be. And so what the program does is try to connect some matches, like here are some schools you might be interested in, here are some careers that you might be interested in. And so this data sharing component really involves our grades. And so what they're hoping to capture is that if we have these grades and we know what colleges they might be interested in California and we have some actual careers or actual majors that might connect, they may be connected in, it's to try to create that match for our particular students. Instead of, what you often find, oftentimes see in data is that kids will either not apply to the schools or continue on and matriculate into the colleges because of this gap in either concerns about admittance, concerns about applying even, et cetera, so.
I understand this. I don't know, bothering me. I'm talking about the data sharing itself. The student enrolled in the foundation, when the student enrolled in UCLA, that the information and data share to stop and being removed from server under the foundation?
So, Mr. Rose, you're asking if the information is purged from their system? So it's no.
Once they enroll, if they completed their goals under the foundation, yes.
That I don't know and we can certainly look into that.
Well, because it's not on the contract at all. I mean, what, what, once the student enrolled, let's say, UCLA, what happened to the data sharing? The foundation going to keep the information for other purposes like third-party advertisement? Now, I brought that up. I get phone call every day, spam phone call every day. And I work really hard to get data out of the system, it's hard. I do want the information that the foundation had. Once a student enters UCLA, there's no need for the foundation to keep the information in the system. They should be discarded, removed. But there's nothing in the contract, they say what to do with the data, once the student enrolled in UCLA, USC, et cetera.
We most certainly can inquire about that. It's a good question.
Yeah, but we're dealing with the contract tonight. I have an issue with that. That's my issue. The other is she was feeding and paying us services. And yet, now this is for free. I believe that's for free under the foundation because the foundation receiving state funds. However, it says here in the event that funding from the state of California is not sustaining in future years. The party understand, which us, in both sides actually, that the foundation may access and charge fees for services provided to the LEA. So my question is, if that, if that is to occur, do you know what the fees would be?
I do not.
So, I mean, we know our budget is not stable. Sacramento is not stable. We don't even know what it'll look like next year. So I'm concerned about this.
Mr. Rose, how about if we do the, how about we have staff get answers to your questions and bring this back in another meeting?
Yeah, I would like to table it. I would like to table this motion.
I'll second that. Okay, so we'll go ahead and table it and. You would like to, oh, we need to vote on table? Okay, let's vote on tabling it. Okay. Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
No.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we'll table it till staff brings it back. That'll take us to the State Seal of Civic Engagement at Charter Oak High School and can I get a motion, bring that forward, please?
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second, Mr. Peterson. I'll second, Mr. Peterson.
Dr. Kim, would you like to give some background on this?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to actually invite Dr. Mustafa to give some background, but just some context with this. This is criteria that is mirroring the state criteria that we're bringing to your attention, and some work that's been accomplished through the sites, and Dr. Mustafa, you can speak to this.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Kim. I'm pleased to recognize the important work that our high school teachers in the social science department have taken, really, the initiative to expand our, the opportunities for our students. Currently, our district offers the State Seal of Bilingual, Biliteracy, which acknowledges seniors who are, demonstrate proficiency in a second language. This year, our high school teachers are taking the meaningful step forward to develop local evidence to meet the state criteria for the State Seal of Civic Engagement, which recognizes students who actively participate in and contribute to their communities. So I'm going to welcome, actually, to the podium Roger Lehigh and Christina Johnson to kind of share the process, because they've been the one to initiate this work, and really, it's for our students, so it's, it's an exciting opportunity for our students to have.
Yeah, I can talk louder. The Charter Oak is on a way to becoming a State Seal of Civic Engagement district, which is a fantastic way to celebrate student achievement and excellence in civic education. We'd like to share a little bit about the process, what we've gone through. We've been able to capture the opportunity to offer this to the overwhelming majority, actually, the entire student population, but particularly through some of the criteria, it has become more widespread than we once thought it could be. We began the actual process this last year, we were hoping actually to complete it at the end of last school year, but we didn't quite meet that goal. I think we wanted to do our due diligence, we established a committee of teachers from other content areas, other programs, so we could further discuss and make sure we could make this inclusive as possible. The state criteria is very clear, they want this to be accessible for all populations, and we went to great lengths to make sure we can ensure that. So as we went through that, one of the, I think, redeeming parts the state put in is to let the local education agency be able to develop criteria that meets their communities. And I think that's why we wanted to take the extra steps to make sure we're doing it the best as we could. So actually, to highlight the senior symposium, which has really made this a wide capture for all students, I'll let Christina kind of explain some of that, what's been going on in that process.
Again, thank you so much for having us. We started the senior symposium three years ago, we're very proud of the work with all of our team and all of our students, and I know some of you have seen it, if you haven't, it's a cross-curricular project, it focuses on economics, civics, and English classes. And yeah, we just wanted to promote student growth, capture 21st century learning, and really focus on the skill base for all students. Thank you.
Thank you both, Roger and Christina, for your hard work in leading this for our students, much appreciated. Any questions?
Ms. McGuire?
So I think that this is a wonderful idea, and then the senior symposium is fantastic, I really enjoy attending it.
Thank you.
I reviewed our district requirements for this seal, and I was curious about possibly adding a community service component. I know the IB students have it, but I think it might be a really great opportunity for our students to participate civically in our own community, similar to like what the Abbott program has to do, so I would, I would be interested in hearing that.
If I could speak to that real quick, so I think that is a wonderful suggestion, I also think that is a pathway for some of our other student populations to make sure they can have this opportunity as well. So IB is a perfect example, if you're a full diploma candidate, you wouldn't come through the senior symposium, however, your cash, your service hours become that, meet that criteria within the state requirements as well. So I think that's where we took the time to make sure that this can be as widespread and accessible to all student populations regardless of schedule, program, and things of that nature. So if someone wanted to do in addition, for sure, but if we were to mandate a community service, that would kind of exceed the standard to the state, I think we want to stay within that. It is certainly a viable option as an alternative, or in addition to for other programs as well, though. So that is certainly embraced, but I don't know if we'd be able to mandate it within the criteria the state set forward.
I think we can, we can exceed, we have to meet the state, but we are permitted as a district to exceed, and I wouldn't think something like super restrictive, but like 10 hours during your senior year, or something like that, just to get students more involved in the community, and it can't hurt, you know?
For sure, and so, for example, within civics, like my participation portfolio offers that opportunity for service hours to count towards my class specifically, but we could actually double-dip that as well. The one thing I think we were very concerned about is making sure that the state is very clear in the opening, they want this to be as accessible to as many students as possible. So we went, I think we had a lot of discussion internally within our committee to make sure we don't, we need to have standards 100%, but we don't want to get to a place where maybe we're excluding people because of whatever particular circumstances going on in their own homes and things of that nature. So we'll defer to the board on that, but just a little insight, I think, to what our process was.
Thank you. Yeah, also, I think it's great to be able to recognize students for their amazing accomplishments, and to even promote them, obviously, if they can receive a seal on their diploma, I'm sure many more students would be interested in continuing to engage civically, which is really cool. So kind of echoing Ms. McGuire's, you know, kind of like, if it's possible to have like an AND OR type of thing, right, these are options, as I think you guys described, that would be really cool. I have a little bit of a question on the fourth criteria that comes down, so the state criteria is to demonstrate civic knowledge, skills, and dispositions through self-reflection. I was kind of curious what that term self-reflection really means, or what would be some examples of how a student would demonstrate that through a self-reflection?
Actually, we just did one, so literally this past week, in all the English classes, all the work we've been doing, which we call like Phase One right now, kind of like the foundation of the project, students are asked about their experience, to reflect upon their, their experience, as well as from like an individual standpoint, but also from their group or team. And so we go back over that, we ask questions, we follow through, just to make sure that all students are taken care of and accounted for. We plan to do another one at the end of the semester, as well as at the start of, you know, second semester, and then we have our large reflection at the end of the year.
Okay, and so in terms of a reflection, is that, if I'm kind of understanding, is that a reflection in the sense of, or they're reflecting on their performance or their execution of a certain project, or?
Yeah, on their own growth through the process, as well as making connections, because as we go through different, for, we can only speak for the senior symposium at this point, right? So within that, though, we're examining data, we are conducting interviews, like, we are constantly expanding there, I think, going back to like 21st century skills and what their exposure is, so we want them constantly reflect on their personal experience, but also relate relative to their, their subject, their issue they've selected, so.
Okay, so the, so the main takeaway, though, would be, at the conclusion of the project, which they are exhibiting through the senior symposium, here's how that specific experience impacted them, developed them civically, things like that. Okay, cool. As I kind of read the specific criteria listed, I, in my opinion, it kind of seems similar to the criteria under number three, in terms of kind of describing the project itself. So I thought maybe that could be a way to kind of, maybe wordsmith a little bit, but in terms of really kind of getting to the spirit, I think, of that criteria, to make sure that it isn't some kind of product that they're producing that is separate from their senior project, but that is about the reflection on themselves, that kind of thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is the goal to have every senior involved in this?
Yes, literally every senior, so whether they're in full IB, or if they're in just CP, econ, or civics, then all students have the opportunity to do it, and that's why it was written like that.
What a coincidence, we have a senior here, Heather. Would you like to give some opinion on that?
Yes, I think this is a great idea, as somebody who is very inclined in interest for historical classes such as civics and econ, I think this is a great idea, and I would be very interested in participating in this. I just had one question, where it says mastery of civics in US-California government, what exactly is mastery? What is the, like, limitations for that, or criteria?
I believe in what we submitted, we actually have grade criteria that's going to kind of match with that. By the way, going back to standards, we exceeded, like, so we gathered already existing districts that have already employed this, and we haven't made, made it overly difficult, but we certainly raised the bar compared to many of the other districts we've seen as well. So mastery might be strong language, but we're using a grade criteria to demonstrate the proficiency that is needed, and through civics, the US history as well, so.
And would the civic issue have to be in somewhere specific, or would it be anywhere in the world?
Anywhere in the world.
All right.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm back, please, please, because I think this is such a great idea, but the way it's presented is everyone gets the prize, right?
Opportunity.
Opportunity, yes. But I know, as a parent of your classes, that some kids did things like volunteered at polling places, or they volunteer at the school board, or at Glendora, right? And so I think, and we have like, what is the, the Turkey Operation Gobble, which is an opportunity for students to participate in the community, really big community opportunities, right, that don't take a lot of time from students. So when we're thinking of something like a state seal of civic engagement, I would think something that they would do in addition to their coursework. And so I just feel really strongly that we can set the bar a little higher, and get our students to meet, meet us there, because I think civic engagement is very important as, as we train up young people, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for everyone to be able to participate in our, our community here. I just want to put that out there one more time.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you guys for the hard work at, at the school, being forward-thinking around this, introducing this concept. I just want to echo the thoughts of our board members. One of the things that I think we are going to all venture into is this, it's a new opportunity for all of us, right? And so part of that new learning is that we're going to have criteria that's established, and the criteria mirrors the state criteria, we're not venturing off of it. I think what we're discussing here are these local evidences, which we want to get right. But part of what I'm probably think is that we'll learn after our first cohort of students, what is the right, what is the right fit, right? And including, or engaging in these types of things, and modifying perhaps over the next, you know, couple of years, as to capture the intent of this seal, as well as making sure it's accessible, yet worthy of accomplishment, right? Not just a sticker that everybody gets, so we have, I think, that opportunity also to be flexible around it in the future.
Yeah, I think that flexibility is really key, as Ms. McGuire is pointing out, there's kind of, I think, in a certain sense, I almost read these guidelines not so much as a set of requirements, I mean, that's part of it, but also as a set of, a listing for students to be able to show them what the opportunities really are, right? Because when you have a rubric, then they can understand, oh, here's all my available options, I can choose any of these types of things, or, I mean, multiple within the listing to satisfy those requirements. So such as, you know, it could be volunteer service, such as we may even want to say on their, students attend a, you know, city council, or county board, or school board, you know, make public comment, or something like that, and have that documented, or something you know, that, like, all of these are great ways for, to encourage young populations, or anybody for that matter, to be civically engaged. So I think that's kind of cool, I think it's an opportunity to have a wide variety of options for the students, yeah.
Heather should be able to, you know, record her volunteers in here, right? Right, Heather?
This is very civically engaged, I think, I would agree with that.
For sure.
Well, again, I want to, oh, Mr. Rose. I want to again thank Mr. Lehigh and Ms. Johnson for their time, but I want you to ask your question, no, please.
I want to ask a question about what McGuire said about Ain High, or something. My concern is that not every student becomes a leader. Not every student becomes a leader, you're going to have leader and followers. So the project, I'm asking the question, is the project be small and big? It doesn't matter, it's only involving civic duties, right? Project could be small and big, doesn't have to be a real big project like, she's here on the board, and, I just want to make sure the student who are the follower can have that experience, may not want to do the big project, but does something for the community, that's okay, right? Okay, I just want to-
That's up to the local education, right? I mean, we, we have the ability to know what's best for our community, and that's how the state kind of put it out there and designed it, which I think is the right thing, so, yeah, these are all things that can be acceptable or good.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So after this year, after your evaluation, there could be modifications to where you're at, and how you want to do it, right?
Well, we should all be reflecting, right?
Yes, sir.
If you can place on anything, always examine if you can improve something and do it better, absolutely.
And just like our project, every year we've adapted it, right, to make it better, and to make it more student-driven and whatnot, so taking feedback and being self-reflecting, so absolutely.
And we'll ask staff to take back the considerations here that you guys have brought up, and see how we might be able to include that in part of the process.
Excellent. So as a point of clarity for me, Dr. Kim, the action that we would take essentially allows this board and district to adopt the state guidelines. The specific requirements that are local are not specifically required to have board approval, it's the, whether we accept the state guidelines.
That's correct, that way, should there be a modification in the future that is, again, fits the needs of the community, we don't have to change the evidence every year, we're just establishing our criteria matches the state criteria.
Stephanie and Roger, thank you for all you do for the kids, and what you continue to do, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, so with that being said, we'll go ahead and take, call for the vote. Dr. Agler? Oh, Heather, you got a question, I'm sorry. Oh, we can take a vote from you.
Uh, yes.
Yes? Dr. Agler?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion passes 4-0 with our student rep in the firm.
She voted.
Okay, you vote.
That takes us to our consent calendar, and we do have a card, Mr. Portillo.
My writing's difficult to read. This item, Inframapa, fantastic. This is cutting-edge, it's a booming industry. I read a little bit on what type of services they provide. I'm currently studying this technology. I actually got into this technology by demand from my employer, ESRI, back in 1998, '99 in Redlands. So currently, I also want to say right off the bat, from what I can understand, what you're receiving for $9,000, that's dirt cheap. I hope you get everything you need, but let me rattle some things off for you right now. Drone deploy, Pix4D, Popular Air, Key Spray, FlyGuys, ESRI, Precision Hawk, FlyBase Labs, AR GIS maps. So in '98, I had to start in GPS, GIS, fleet management. It was all very early, and then I bought my first drone in 2013, it's a dinosaur. Because of regulations, I stopped FAA 107 Part A. This is such a robust industry, that is, is in its infancy, that under this contract, who's going to monitor the vendor? Because if there's any way you can have an educator, or somebody who develops, you watch what these people are going to be doing, you're going to be fascinated. And for what you're doing now, or what you're contracting to do, is minuscule. When I see that right there already, you'll have the base, that you could have, I hate saying this, RTKN observance, where you can have, be able to deploy, deploy an automatic drone, when an incident happens, on demand, fly the perimeter, or check out the incident, it could be communicated completely if you're in cooperation with the local law enforcement, administrators can see what's occurring in an instant. Administrators can see what's occurring in an instant. That's what your application could be. But you need to understand, this is such a burgeoning, burgeoning work, that Drone Deploy, one of the global leaders in this technology, and yes, Amazon. If you're under 24 years old, they will pay for people under that age to get their 4017B certificate to be a remote pilot. That's what I'm working on right now. Because they already know, they do not have enough people for what they see that's coming out. This is very, very exciting. So you should have someone look over as much as they can as they develop this, and it'll push that person to look even closer. And I suggest you have, if you have other committees, engagement that was talked about, plus culture, you need to get a good group of teachers to look into these burgeoning technologies. It's very exciting. I know it's a direct application, but you're going to be astonished of what you're buying.
Thank you, Mr. Portillo. Yeah, I'll take us to our consent calendar, does anybody want anything pulled?
What is that, 12A8? That's wrong. No, 17, is that 17?
17.
17.
17.
17A, number eight, budget revision and transfer.
All right, can I get a motion to pass all items under consent, except for item 17A8?
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? I'll call for the vote. Heather?
I approve.
Dr. Agler?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, motion passes four zero with the student rep in affirmative. That'll take us to item 17A8, budget revisions and transfers. Can you get a motion, pull that forward? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Mr. Rose?
Thank you. I have a, I saw the form fill out, and I'm concerned about the money, the budget itself. I know this, this, the impact is huge, by moving around. I wanted to make sure that, you know why, you know why we move the money from one, the other one?
Yes, so these are carryover funds after closing the books. We do have a lot of categorical carryovers, and so we're trying to get these revisions in the system before December, so the sites can see what they have and be able to track their spending. Usually, we wait until December for the first interim, but we're trying to help the sites with their carryovers. So we're not necessarily moving money, we're adding carryover fund balances, so they're able to spend those.
So it seems like we're trying to balance as much as we can, we don't have any flexibility with the financial we have.
Repeat that.
I mean, you have to keep track of that financial, it's pretty tight, and you have to, if there are needs, money in that category, you got to find a way to move the money over.
Correct. And so, again, those are carryover, they're fund balances, so we are putting them in places where the sites wants those. Yes.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Heather?
Yes.
Dr. Agler?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion passes four zero with the student rep in the affirm, which will take us to board comments. Dr. Agler?
Great, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Wonderful hearing in our student rep report today, so many of the accomplishments of our various sports teams. It's been a really strong start to the fall season for the high school. Obviously, again, we mentioned the football team is doing incredibly well, the volleyball teams, so many of the teams, including even beyond the high school, even over at ROMs, we've got some sports teams. I know it was ROMs night tonight, I know our basketball team has been doing fantastically down there at ROMs as well. So that's really exciting. I know they have a winter flag football that they'll be doing upcoming as well, so I hope we'll see a lot of students down at ROMs getting involved there as well. And then in the VAPA side of things, Dr. Kim, you mentioned that the choir is going to be attending, or performing, I should say, at Carnegie Hall, which is an amazing honor. Not only will they be performing, which is usually part of what they call a mass choir, many students from many schools that are performing together in one mass choir, but actually, we got invited to feature specifically our advanced choir, and they will sing solely, just themselves, solely, S-O-L-I, is kind of a pun, actually. Yeah, for us music nerds in there. And so that, yeah, it's okay, that's how my classes go, too, I'm always great. But yeah, that's actually an extra distinction that I know Charter Oak hasn't had previously, even though we've performed previously at Carnegie Hall, so that's really cool. I'm thinking about it, I might have to book a trip to New York to go catch that, who knows, we'll see. And then, let's see, the band, they actually are kicking off their competitive season this weekend, Saturday, at Baldwin Park High School. That'll be their first competition of the, of the fall season, so it'll be exciting to hopefully see them be successful there. And, and I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McGuire?
Good evening, everyone. It is October, and that means it is a couple of things. I'll start with my kind of great and kind of sad thing. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I want to first support all of everyone who is fighting breast cancer, and all of our breast cancer survivors. And I also want to call out my cousin Myra's name, who did not survive her battle with breast cancer, but she is still here in spirit and fights along everyone who is in their battles. Also, October is FAFSA Month, and this year, FAFSA opened the earliest that it ever has since its inception, due to advocacy of students across the country. So it opened in September, for the first time since FAFSA has been a thing, and it's actually simplified. So students who are doing the FAFSA for the very first time should have a much more pleasurable experience than students who did it even three years ago. Also, yes, congratulations to our choir going to Carnegie Hall, that is amazing. And I also want to make sure I shout out Charter Oak Football for beating Long Beach Jordan High School. This is a point of personal privilege, I happen to know the mayor of Long Beach, and he is my brother, and I have let him know every day since the football team destroyed Long Beach Jordan High School's football team, how much they suck. So I'm very pleased with our team for doing that. Operation Gobble is on October 23rd, right here at Charter Oak High School. It's an opportunity for our community to come out and volunteer, and help out those in need. And if you are a community member in need, it's an opportunity to receive everything you need for a traditional turkey Thanksgiving dinner, complete with a turkey, or a gift card for a turkey. Election Day, the last day to vote, is November 4th. That's a different way to put it, because you can vote anytime up until November 4th, because we all get mail-in ballots in our state. So that's a great, great opportunity for everyone to make sure they civically engage in our great state. It is a special election, so it is an election that many people were not expecting, so it's important to make sure that we tell everyone we know to go participate in this election. Another personal thing, I have organized my community to be a safe space for Halloween. I knocked on every single door on Cummings Road, and got them all to agree to hand out candy this Halloween. So if you have kids and they need somewhere to go, come visit Cummings Road between Covina and Cypress, and every door, with the exception of three, should be handing out candy. Lastly, I just want to make sure, because we tabled the item before I got to get my discussion points out about the FCC, so I just wanted to say that the Foundation for California Community Colleges is actually created to assist our public colleges in this state with the creation of technology and app software. So there are several applications, one named Here to Career, where you can actually get localized career data, and help you with your job search, and which careers would be the most beneficial or profitable in your local community, so that students can actually go to school and return with a degree of value for their local community. So this will be another instance of those types of apps that the Foundation develops. They work solely with our public college systems in this state. This transition is going to be mandated in January of '27. So what would have been, or what could happen this year, is that we will get funds to help us with that transition this year. The offer is not on the table for next year, it's up in the air, depending on the budget. Lastly, the ability to participate in a program like this can only benefit our students. Right now, when you apply for college, Heather, I'm sure you know this, you have to match your classes, right? So does this government class count as this thing for the school? If you use this particular website, it matches it for you, cutting your college application time in less than half. So that is a benefit. And a benefit of early adoption is that our students will be able to get pre-approval and acceptances, early acceptances into the California State University system. So I just wanted to make sure I said all of those things. I look forward to it coming back onto our agenda, because again, I believe that our students should have all doors open. If they choose not to go to college, that's fine, but if they want to go to college, then we should do everything in our power to make sure that we don't have unnecessary barriers in place. With that, I think that concludes everything I need to say. Thank you.
Mr. Rose?
Thank you. I'm glad I asked a question about the financing and budgets. You know, hearing about the South Patina Unified School District, they're in a big hole, I think about $35 million deficit in that with this. The South Patina Unified, I don't know, it's like millions of dollars, maybe statuizing, but, South Patina Unified School District, they're in big trouble with the finances, and, and we, I feel that we should not be in that situation as well. We still need to monitor our budget, we still need to watch what we, what we spend, and what we, and we use the money to serve our student, period. So all we need to do, use that money to serve our student, and then wait, see how a Roman number down the line, and then see what our budget look like next year. So this is something that I think the board is interested in, be stable, stay stable, and do what we can. The bottom line is the student, bottom line, the student. Then, the holidays coming up next month, I'll be out of town, November 20th, so I'll be, I'll miss the meeting. Mr. President, I won't be here, just to let you know, I'll be out of town. But then, I'm looking forward to the next meeting, I think it was Board Assembly Section, and I think, I'm very happy to, you know, be a part of, if even I can, to help this district move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. All right, there's a public service announcement for the Charter Oak Unified School District. I want to indicate that the Long Beach Jordan Football Team, that was your own personal opinion, just in case we have to play them in the playoffs. I don't want any, I don't want any bulletin board material. I'm sure your brother appreciates that.
I also attached one in the screen post.
Nice, nicely done. A lot of good things happening, the volleyball program, they took second in league, as I think Heather brought up. They are getting their playoff draw on Saturday, and Isis is a phenomenal player, the student rep who's here, she's a phenomenal player out there on the court. Shout out to the band. It was pouring rain the other day, and those guys and ladies are out there marching around, and Joel's in his shorts, and he's like swimming, but people don't realize how much work the band folks put in, even though we didn't get your joke. But in all reality, those kids out there marching around in the mud with carrying those instruments, it's a sight to see when you see how much work they put in. Also, the state seal of civic engagement that Roger and Christina presented, fantastic, to show the importance of getting kids involved in their civic duty, and Operation Gobble. What was that, November 8th, right? On Saturday?
October 23rd.
It's October 23rd?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm going to change it in my schedule. But I'd also give a shout out to the, our sports medical team. What I didn't know is that they take appointments during the day for kids, our athletes who are injured and rehabbing, or getting taped up, or whatever. So they have a QR code, and the kids go in there at specific times, and, and they get ready for their, their activities. But those kids work hard, too. No wonder they're number one in the nation. And today was a great American shakeout, I was actually at Charter Oak when it went down today. It was, it seemed like it was seamless, kids knew what to do, staff knew what to do, the notifications went out on time, and they did a really good job. And with that, we are, our next future meeting is November 6th, which is a board study session, at 4:30 PM, and it's a joint personnel commission meeting, so we get to see Mr. Cook. And our closed session, nothing is needed there, and therefore, we are adjourned at...